I guess there are.
Well, it's a city, boy.
I work at Dory.
This meeting of City Council will become the order of our pleasure.
The allegiance to your pride in the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice in common.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Gustafson?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Bartlett?
Yes.
Mrs. Crudo?
Yes. Okay, we have minutes from the July 11th meeting. You've had a chance to look them over, review them. Does anybody have any comments or do we have a motion to approve that presented?
Motion, sir.
Roll call.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Gustafson?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Bartlett?
Yes.
Mrs. Crudo?
Yes. All right, we'll have nothing under revision of the agenda or school lands on tonight. We now come to a written communication from Scott O'Neil requesting the use of Justice Park. And, Mr. O'Neil, you're here. Would you want to present this as long as you're here?
Certainly.
Would you like to come up to the podium here?
I don't have a copy of it. I need my coffee. I didn't intend to.
Well, as long as you're here, we don't have questions for you when you're done, so.
Well, the email I sent reads as follows. To whom I concern, due to the tragic circumstances regarding the death of Marilyn Peterson, which occurred during an intervention on her family's behalf by the Oil City Police Department, many of Inango County residents are left with a troubled sense of loss, both for the family and potentially for our perceived safety under the watch of our police force. With this in mind, we wish to assemble as a community in Justice Park on a date in the near future, no later than next week if at all possible, to display our solidarity with the family of Marilyn Peterson and our frustration, anger, and heartbreak at the circumstances surrounding her death. We will meet peacefully and respectfully, it is no one's intention within this group, already dozen strong, to vilify the police force. We simply feel that a demonstration of this kind is absolutely necessary. I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for coming in, for being here for this presentation. As you probably are somewhat aware, it's public park and people are free to use it. There are a few things that when you're having a group like this is normally, well, actually, in most cases where it's a public gathering, we get insurance, but I'm sure that as a group you do not have that available.
Right.
Which means that somebody has to take the responsibility for the organization and for the cleanup and hopefully for the peaceful and respectfulness of it.
Well, the first thing I need to point out is we don't have officially an organization. This is just people acting together out of a sense of community.
Right.
All right, so, you know, we don't have an LLC behind us or any funding or anything of that nature.
Well, we understand that, so we know that there's not going to be any group that can present insurance to against any liability.
Now, I can, I can make personal organization for cleanup. I've got no problem with things like that. I've done it in the past a lot of times with different kinds of gatherings. As far as, you know, if the council's looking for guarantees of, you know, how a demonstration of this, of this kind would go through and whether or not it would remain peaceful, obviously, I can't make guarantees because I, I don't speak for everyone. I speak for myself and a lot of people just have to agree. But, I think that using the gathering that we had on Monday as an example, you can see that things went fairly well, all things considered. People came together. Things were pretty tame throughout, you know, most of the march. And when you called me and expressed concern.
Yes.
I went around and asked a few people to help me spread the message that maybe it would be a good time to disperse and within minutes, the crowd dispersed.
I see. Okay. Well, you know, I, the best I can say to you though is that we do have some concern anytime there is assembly and nobody wants to take responsibility for it.
It's not that I don't want to, it's that I can't. I don't speak for everybody. I don't speak for anybody but myself.
Mr. O'Neil, if you're, if you're willing to take the lead on assuring that the property's properly pleased to clean up afterwards, you know, we'll take that. But, as any other public gathering, we have a right, we have a right to assembly, but it's going to be subject to any other conduct within the city. If anybody becomes disorderly, they're subject to.
I would expect that. And furthermore, if anybody becomes, you know, unruly, disrespectful, so forth, they, you know, breaks laws specifically, I would expect them to be dealt with accordingly. Furthermore, the message I've been putting out to everybody that chooses to participate in anything I happen to organize is that the minute things start to go the wrong way, we disperse. Because we don't want any problems either.
Okay.
That's very reasonable.
That's, if that is your, your intention and if that's your word on that, part of the thing that I can understand, people dispersing very often is a good idea when things start to.
Well, that's, you know, when you called me with your concerns on Monday night, that's exactly what we did. I, I talked to a few people that happened to be around me and spread the message and it was.
Okay, all right.
Um, I did want to raise a couple of things while I was up here.
All right.
Very briefly. The intended subject of the demonstration would primarily involve transparency. Now, as I understand it, the final, the decision on whether or not this report becomes public lies with the district attorney. That's the primary reason I think the demonstration is necessary, so that people see how many people really want this information out there. And it sounds, from everything, like everybody's leaning that way anyway, so that's, that's a good start. However, I think it's also a good opportunity to, to put the message out that if our police force needs things, we as a community need to know about it. For example, a lot of people, myself included, believe that additional training on how to deal with situations involving people with mental and physical handicaps would be appropriate, given just what we know so far. Furthermore, we found out that the, the department only has three tasers. I think virtually everybody in this community just assumed that our officers were armed with them. Now, it's my understanding that they don't have them because the department can't afford them. Well, if our department needs things in order to properly police us and help us with our safety, I think people need to know and be given the opportunity to organize to raise the funds for them. And that's what I'm going to cover in that demonstration.
That, that sounds like a good idea.
Okay.
And with that, does anybody else on the head council have anything to ask of Mr. O'Neil?
My first question was, and maybe you've just covered it, is what, how would this differ from what took place on the other evening? As far as, you know, it seemed like this may have quite, you know, the other evening. I was, I was quite impressed with the number of people that did show up. And I guess I'm, I'm pleased that you guys were able to disperse, obviously, when things broke down and came different than what they were characterized to be.
The, the primary difference, as I see it, between what happened Monday and what would happen if we're given a permit is that this would be a structured demonstration, meaning that there would be speakers and whoever volunteers to help me organize with all of that, including anybody here that would like to be involved, will range for the speaking schedule. Once that's taken care of, you know, we'll have basically an agenda to cover. And that agenda would, would include, as we said, transparency and fundraising for training and whatever means is appropriate. So, the difference is, what we did Monday was a show of solidarity and respect for the loss of the family. And that's all anybody that was involved with what I organized wanted to do. This would be an opportunity to actually speak out and get some ideas across the community.
Personally, I have no qualms against people, the public using our, our expenses. I think that's what they're there for. I think the concern mainly would lie here and why we ask for liability insurances and organization for a structure if you have to make this. From my point of view is that we don't have any destruction of the park property and so forth and that type of thing, that it would be, the property would be treated respectfully and, you know, and we don't escalate it into some mob situation.
Right, right.
And I didn't see that Monday. Other than I guess people started congregating and I guess there was some concern at that point.
But I think the main reason people started to congregate is a lot of the people that turned up for that happened to be older and some of them had physical disabilities as well.
None of them were older than I.
That may be so. My point though is a lot of them were not able to continue walking a two-block circle for an hour and a half.
And obviously, you're aware that we're, like, just beginning Harity tweak.
Yeah.
The park is going to be quite congregated.
Yes, that's the other thing, I think, and I don't want to override you here, but there, there's no date in here, no time.
Right, well, in the original email, the idea was to get a permit before we did anything.
Yes.
Okay, and obviously, we weren't able to come to an arrangement on that.
Right.
Which is why we arranged the vigil in small groups and, and made it a march so that we didn't have to occupy a specific space. Now, in the email, it says something about no later than next week. Now, that was, that was given at the time that this had happened. Now, obviously, you know, I respect the park is in use and there's a lot of things going on. And being as the vigil has already happened, we've already made our show of community, there's not necessarily an immense rush to, to have this happen. I, I would like to have it in, in the near future, but I don't think it needs to happen, you know, overnight. And obviously, the organization of it is going to require some time as well.
Okay, so at this point, you're still not coming up with a, a time of.
What I'm saying is I'm willing to work with council on that.
Oh, well, I guess it's pretty much, you could check with the city, but after Harity tweak is over, I don't think there's that much scheduled other than like Friday night concert, which I'm assuming you won't do it on a Friday night, knowing that there's a concert down there. So, I would say that it's a matter of coming up with a date. And I would think that you could call City Hall at any point and.
Is that some valid taken to the city manager?
City manager's office. He's out of town until sometime this coming week. But, once you have a date that you think would work, you could just verify that there isn't anything else scheduled.
Okay.
Okay.
I would want to comment as far as timing of the dates and so forth and your, your issue about transparency. And I would like to share that, that none of us on council really are aware of the results of investigations or anything at that point.
I understand.
If those results were to come out before that, before that, would that change the nature possibly of?
It would certainly change the nature of it because I think the main, the main thing that the community at large that I've heard is, is concerned about is, is that report becoming public. That's the main thing that I hear from virtually everybody.
I think that you should be aware that it's myself at least, and I'm sure everybody on council joins me in this, that we have no problem releasing this report at whatever time it is because at this point, we don't know any more than you.
Right, I understand.
And we certainly would want whatever information is available. But again, we have to wait until such a time as the, the report is released. And then, again, given circumstances, because if it were going to involve any sort of legal action or lawsuit, then you have the fact that you don't talk about that ahead of time either.
Right, I understand that as well. But the demonstration, obviously, is, is, is not a legal action. We can't force the hand of anybody. The idea behind this is, as I understand it, again, the final decision regarding whether or not this report becomes public lies with the district attorney.
Yes.
So, making sure that she sees how much of the community is very concerned with being able to see that report may influence her decision. If by some chance, the report were finished and released before this gathering could happen, which seems unlikely, the gathering could still have some very productive outcomes, especially regarding the reasons of, you know, training and equipping the police force to their, to their needs.
Would you have a, if you're looking beyond Oil Heritage Week, do you have a timeframe that you would like to, I mean, that, I, that would be the week, I guess, Oil Heritage Weekend, Sunday the 28th, be it Monday the 29th, or a minimum following week? I mean, do you have something in your mind?
I hadn't, I hadn't thought of any specific date to this point because I figured the, the best approach would be to, to be open to the suggestions of council and the city manager. Obviously, Oil Heritage Week has to happen and that's already scheduled. Anytime in August, I think, would be, would be fine. Provided enough time to, to organize what needs to be organized.
Can we issue a permit without a date, you know? I mean, or, or attach stipulations to it that the city manager be notified?
I think we could. If somebody wanted to make a motion that we agreed to it upon a mutual agreement of the date.
Well, if it possibly, you know, or notification of the city manager of the date ahead of time, I'd make that motion.
All right.
I'll second that.
All right.
Do we have a sense of how much time? Do you have block time, like from 6:00 to 9:00 or?
I wouldn't want to make it any longer than two hours because I feel like anything beyond that, people are likely to either get too tired or too wired.
68, 79, then you have.
6 to 8, I think, would be a little more appropriate.
If you're not after dark and you don't have to, you have lights and electricity and stuff.
That's something that, in fact, I would amend my motion bill when the, the event takes place during daylight.
I'd, I'd be happy to have that, yeah. I, I, I would. If at all possible, I would like to see it happen on a Saturday afternoon because that way, the most people available could attend.
Well, that's reasonable. As long as, like I said, and you just, once you think that you have a date, you call City Hall or my office and we'll make sure that you, it's something that doesn't have a conflict with anything.
Fantastic.
Require that at least maybe 48 hours before.
Oh, certainly.
Or something.
Okay.
Everybody was aware and had time to be aware.
Certainly, I'll need, I'll need more time than that to make sure everybody in the community knows it, so.
72.
We have a motion on the floor and we've had a second. Do we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Gustafson?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Bartlett?
Yes.
Mrs. Crudo?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Gentlemen, you've had the time to review the environmental reports to allow your motion to acceptance of put on record and presented.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Gustafson?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Bartlett?
Yes.
Mrs. Crudo?
Yes. We, oh, we have one too.
To the mayor and members of city council, library books and materials, $2,460.48. Oil Creek District Library, $9,006.78. General Fund, $435,168.61. Offway Project, $0.47. Water account, $119,041.52. Investment account, $10,000. Capital reserve account, $10,848.45. Liquid fuels tax fund, $14,041.69. Arts council, $6,959.40. Payroll account, $4,604.98. Parking review account, $183. Shade tree memorial fund, $185. Utility deposit escrow, $461.06. Water and sewer projects, $2,528.14. Industrial park, $5,463.38. Weeden Sea, $79.90. I have audited the foregoing checks and find them to be correct. Robert M. Cross, City Controller.
It says period of July, so I would guess. Okay. Do we have a motion to, well, any questions?
No, I guess that was my question. I would imagine these amounts would be combined with vouchers that we did not have prepared.
They were given from a financial office, maybe today.
Okay. With that, the motion to accept the voucher report is presented. Roll call.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Gustafson?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Bartlett?
Yes.
Mrs. Crudo?
Yes. And we have financial reports, which you also have in time to review them.
I'm going to have to read them.
I know, I think so. Has anybody got any comments or questions at this point? A vote or a motion to approve the, the financial reports presented.
I'll get motion, it's ahead.
Roll call.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Gustafson?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Bartlett?
Yes.
Mrs. Crudo?
All right, we have a bid, 2013-05A for citywide demolition and a ward. Do you want to speak to this, Mr. Moon? No. In that case, huh? In that case, rip that.
Four bids were received for the citywide demolition, at least the rebidding of the citywide demolition project for 10 residential structures.
Yes.
Okay. A low bidder was Bert Claybeck Incorporated, $57,000. The funds will be paid through the block grant, 2012 block grant. And, do you want to?
I was hoping to see if there was a cover page, but it's not.
Oh, there's a cover. You'll be, okay, I'm basically, we have about.
That's the memo.
Okay, we have approximately $70,800 for the, the year of that. So, we got a good bid from Mr. Claybeck. We appreciate his bidding that, that low. We believe because he is local, the other bidders are from Clarion, Kylerstown in Warren, PA, their bids are higher to reflect their, their costs from down here. And Mr. Green will present this bid for Ward to contract. I know his offices already have the contracts prepared to send out tomorrow, pending council's hopeful approval. And that's about it, Mayor.
That's fine. Does council have any questions?
I just want to say how pleased I am with this, with this cost. This is a very, very good price. And I firmly believe that Mr. Claybeck is, is making an effort to help the city.
Yes.
So, I believe that that means we should have a little more available for demolition because we'll be able to do something this year. To me, that looks like we have $26,800.
You're not spending all your money, Kurt. They want to know how many more houses you're going to spend the rest of the money. You're saving it for next year?
Mr. Green can bundle that for next year. And don't forget, we also have to take a new strip cost out of there and another, I think it was $1,600 to, to put the address on the paper bid. So, not all that, you know, for demolition still, but still. We have, we, we, we approved 17, so we have seven in the hopper that got the, the environmental review available, so yes.
Is there a reason that they need to wait till next year?
That would be Mr. Green. That would be, Mr. Green, I don't know.
Other bidding process, I know.
They're talking about the other seven hun, or seven houses, or whatever, and the CDBG funds. That's next year.
Next year.
Okay. Thank you.
My question was why, though? Just because of bidding logistics or cost of bidding?
Remember, Kurt, we got seventeen here, because we had money, we thought for seventeen, but there is, I think there are some problems, again, people buy them, they've taken off the list and things like that, that's why I've reduced to ten, but also the people who do buy them, a lot of times, they can't do anything, they go back on Kurt's demolition list.
I feel like the sooner they're down, the better.
I agree, Mr. Gustafson.
We had a motion and a second?
No.
No motion.
I was waiting for a roll.
No motion. I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Gustafson?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Bartlett?
Yes.
Mrs. Crudo?
Rodney Buncher.
Darn right.
Okay. We have a railroad trail lease. Can we have a resolution on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, we want to discuss, I guess, the business before we do it. Chris, would you like to address this? Give us some background here on what we're going to pass.
Would you like to say a mark?
Sure.
Okay.
That always helps.
This will fill in what's known as the West End gap. We were never able to obtain right-of-way, either with the railroad or with the private property owners between Dar Street and Osborne Street. So what happens now is, our trail is off-road from the Marina. We have an off-road trail on city property that goes to Dar Street. At Dar Street, we have signage that routes people up Dar, onto First, over to Osborne, down to Osborne, and then they go on the trail at the wastewater treatment plant to Franklin. Coming back, it's the same way, so it's two-way through that area. We have finally negotiated an agreement that is acceptable to the railroad and the city staff and Mr. Versick to use where the railroad tracks used to be. The railroad tracks have been actually removed.
Oh, okay.
Okay, the railroad tracks go to Continental Plastic Containers, which is located just past Dar Street.
Oh, between Dar and Minna.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And they have a spur line that goes over at this intersection. It actually crosses, crosses Dar and goes into their property. So they're the last customer. Past there, these tracks have been removed. Terms of the lease, our lease is going to be with Western New York and Pennsylvania Railroad, who is in a long-term lease with the actual owner of the railroad, who is North Oak Southern. They have, is it 2031? It's seventeen, it's not quite eighteen years, I think, we're in seventeen-plus years left on their lease with North Oak Southern, and that will be the term of our lease with them. They have all property rights to form lease agreements and do all sorts of things with property. The one stipulation that we will have to comply with is when, I don't actually know where these railroad ties came from, but there are, there's a big pile of railroad ties that is on this railroad right-of-way. We will be responsible for removing them and disposing of them. So we are not sure if we apply to DCNR for grant money, which is the state agency that most likely would give grant money for trail purposes. They may or may not pay, or they may or may not say that would be an eligible activity under their grant to remove those ties. We may have to do that on our own with safe money.
All right, so now, tell me, this is going to open it up all the way, then, because this is what's been blocked before?
Right, so this will put it off-road.
Yeah, all the way to the Marina.
It's going to be off-road, no pay.
We would want to make a, improve a trail.
Right, great.
I think we could sign it now with what it is, and maybe do a little grading with the help of Public Works Department, but I think there's some puddling, you know, some holes in that area. But beyond that, we would go and apply for money through, most likely DCNR, unless somebody else comes up with a grant program for trails, and we would want to put an improved surface there and an agreement allowed. Yeah, I think people, I'm told people are using it anyway.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
I was wondering about the great project, I guess, that's been moving through a while. I mean, we looked into it, it's a, it's a big project in itself.
Yes.
Just talk about those, about those ties being disposable and scrub grass on the DOR.
Yes, scrub grass power plant is legally allowed to burn them, they have permission to burn them. We have to get them transported to there, and that is the cost, basically, yeah.
Step the progress.
Yes.
On a trail activity.
Definitely. It's been a long time.
If you don't have a timer, how quickly we have to remove them?
I don't think so. Bob, Bob can I answer any questions about the details of the agreement?
Are they even, is part of contract? Are the ties even in this contract?
Yes, they're in there.
Okay. And we will do supplement, okay?
It's in the contract, as far as they won't do anything about it.
It's in the contract that the city is liable for removing them.
If we wish to utilize that.
I think we have to remove them regardless of what we do with the agreement, yeah.
So everybody come on down to the west end and grab a railroad tie?
No.
Didn't like that one. Does anybody else have any other questions for Chris?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett, for having this ready.
Yeah, Bob's gone through a lot with me.
Because the railway is getting empty, so this would have three reviews. All right, with that, we're now dealing with the Resolution 2013-08, approving the lease of property in the fourth ward with the Western New York and Pennsylvania Railroad LLC. Would you like to read it?
A resolution of the City of Oil City, approving the lease of property in the fourth ward of the city with the Western New York and Pennsylvania Railroad LLC. Whereas the City of Oil City maintains an off-road recreational trail that comprises a portion of the Erie to Pittsburgh Trail Alliance, an active coalition of trail corridors and organizations, municipalities, and individuals dedicated to promotion, acquisition, development, and maintenance of safe, non-motorized trails network that connects Erie to Pittsburgh. And whereas the City of Oil City recognizes the importance and value of a recreational trail network to improve the quality of life for our city residents and visitors and communities along the trail network, while stimulating economic development and recreational tourism activities. And whereas there is a gap in the off-road recreational trail in the city's west end between Dar and Osborne Streets, where the recreational trail is currently signed on roadways. And whereas the City of Oil City recognizes that off-road trails are safer for trail users. And whereas the City of Oil City has negotiated a property lease with the Western New York and Pennsylvania Railroad for property on former rail lines between Dar and Osborne Streets in the city's fourth ward for the purposes of constructing and maintaining a recreational trail. And whereas the city desires to accept and enter into the property lease with the Western New York and Pennsylvania Railroad according to the terms and conditions in the proposed form attached. Now, therefore, being resolved by the council of the City of Oil City, and it is hereby resolved by authority of the same, the city agrees to lease from the Western New York and Pennsylvania Railroad all those certain pieces of parcels of land and former rail lines between Dar and Osborne Street in the fourth ward of the City of Oil City, according to the terms and conditions of the proposed property lease attached here too, and that the mayor and city clerk be and are authorized and directed to finalize, enter into, and execute said lease and any other necessary instruments, to authorize and direct the payment of all lease consideration and perform all other obligations under said lease, and to do all things necessary and convenient to effectuate and complete a lease of property contemplated herein.
Thank you. Council, any other questions or a motion to approve Resolution 2013-08?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Gustafson?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Bartlett?
Yes.
Mrs. Crudo?
Yes. We're now going to deal with the presentation for Mr. Evan Carl. And I have to tell you that Mr. Carl was the winner of the Pennsylvania Municipal League Essay Contest. He came in first place. This is the first time that anybody from the Oil City has ever received this award, and we thought it appropriate to make sure that we recognized him here at home and not just in their, or State College, where we had our meeting, and he got invited out to breakfast and all. So our letter to Mr. Carl is, Dear Evan, the council of the City of Oil City, would like to take this opportunity to congratulate you on your selection as the Pennsylvania, come on, stand up, Pennsylvania Municipal League's first-place winner of their 30th Annual High School Senior Essay Contest Scholarship Award. Your essay entitled, "Cultivating Community Cooperation," brought to light how several community entities can come together to make a much-needed service a reality. The local dental clinic is providing a wonderful service to many individuals in the area who otherwise could not afford treatment. We are, you are to be commended for your efforts, and the City of Oil City wants to again congratulate you and best wishes to you and your future endeavors. And I have a signed copy of the letter to give to you, and we are very glad to have you here tonight, because, like I said, we thought you ought to be recognized at home as well as, as down the road somewhere, so.
I'd just like to say I'm happy to live in a community that can work so well together.
Okay, thank you. Did you see a copy of what he wrote? I'd be glad to give this to you.
Thank you.
There's one of the fun things of the field. So we thank you for coming and that also. Okay. We have to take an action regarding the residency of the city manager. As most of the public knows, the city, new city manager has been here for approximately six months and has had a little problem trying to locate a residence for him and his family that would meet their needs and their situation at the moment. And because he was not able to line something up in the city limits, which is part of the contract and part of the charter, he has asked for, all right, a motion dealing with this, a motion to allow he, the city manager, Mr. Stroll, and his family to live outside the boundaries of the City of Oil City for a period of not more than one year from this And at that time, the council would review that, review that again, that, I'm trying to think what it is, residency issue, or to give him a pass on his residency. What? An exemption. Thank you very much. I'm glad that you're young enough to remember what's going on. Anyways, with that in mind, council, it's up to you how you, I know that we all feel that this is, we want our city manager to live in town, and we feel it's important, but we all recognize that the man has had a problem with what is going on, so it's up to you. Do we have a motion to allow him this?
I'll also move that the investments required for a time period of one year from today's date, and if necessary, we will review it, and that prior to the expiration, with the understanding that Mr. Stroll is made clear he could pursue the opportunity to live in the city. We all know the circumstances back home alike of this stuff.
Yes. Okay, second?
I'll second that option. I'm disappointed, but.
Yes. All right, any other comments? Roll call.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Gustafson?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Bartlett?
Yes.
Mrs. Crudo?
Yes. All right, I'm, we're coming to that portion where it's called public comment, and individuals get called on by person. And just so that it doesn't become an issue later on, I will review the fact that people are allowed to speak to council, or allowed to speak to council, not to any member of the staff, but to speak to council here through me, and for a limited time of five minutes at the most. And I'll call you, and you've got your, you know, you've got a choice of speaking or not, it's up to you what you want to do. Now, the Carls, you people have signed in earlier, and I didn't know whether anybody wanted to have anything more to say or not.
Yeah.
Well, we were glad to have you here. Mr. Alcorn, did you have anything you wanted to speak to?
I'm just observing.
Thank you for coming. I'm sorry, I cannot read this name. Bill, somebody that lives at Hoffman Avenue.
I believe he's left now.
All right, thank you. Sheila Whately?
She left as well.
Okay. Raymond Peterson?
Mr. Peterson has nothing to address the council about.
Pardon?
He has nothing to address council about. He's here.
Oh.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'm, I am sorry for your situation. I'm assuming you're a relative, son?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson, I'm sorry. I know this is a hard time under the best of circumstances, so my sympathies go to you, sir.
Also, counsel.
Yes, well, yes, just not me, all of us really feel terrible about this situation. Okay. Mr. O'Neil, do you have anything else to say?
Me?
Oh, all right, Scott, yeah, Scott O'Neil, yeah.
I don't know if he's still here.
No.
He left as well.
Okay, and you're Mr. Dan O'Neil?
That's me.
All right, Mr. O'Neil, I'm going to ask you, because you mark the shits, are you a resident of Oil City?
Yes, ma'am.
Bronkwood Avenue isn't in Oil City.
It's not?
No. It's Cornplanter Township.
Oh, well, it says Oil City on my, I pay oil city taxes.
No, you pay Cornplanter Township taxes.
And I filled my forms out wrong at work.
And that's the reason for the question, huh?
I filled my forms out wrong at work.
Well, that is, that's your problem.
I've been a life resident of Oil City, but.
And I'm not being unkind, but the truth is that that is why we ask. Unless you have something that, for some reason, that you have a connection to in Oil City, if you are not a city resident and a city taxpayer, we normally don't allow you to speak to.
Well, I hadn't planned to speak, ma'am, I just came.
Well, I'm not, I just wanted to make you aware of that, because I see there's somebody else here that has a Franklin address, and, well, I can under, there's no objection to you being here, but you are not welcome to speak as a taxpayer of the city or residence of the city. All right, the next, we'll move on to a Mr. Campbell, William Campbell?
Eila.
Joanne Shelton? Joanne Shelton. Sam Ross. All these people left, this, this is what we were doing. Marcus Miller.
He left as well.
Where are all your people's slips? All right, Ellen Huff.
Here for observation and, uh, pay my support.
Okay, thank you. Tara Smith with, uh, the reservation. Thank you. Diane Hagler.
Yeah. I have pictures also. I took, I live on Bissell. I have a residence that lives right beside me. These people had gas in their house when they start a purchase in this house. But then the gas man come up and ripped the meter out of the house. These people have propane tanks in their house to heat with, small ones to cook with. I went to the fire department on Bissell and Plummer Street. They said, well, thanks for letting us know. We know if we get a call to that residence, not to go in there, we'll get blowed up, okay? I've been to the code office about this. I have pictures of the, the fallen off porches off of this house. The shingles are falling off the house. They have rodents digging holes up underneath the foundation. There is nothing being done about this. I was to the code office just Monday. Okay, these people bought a trailer at Rhodes Trailer Court last year when the fire department, I went to Steve Hines. Steve Hines come up and had them remove the fire, the propane tanks out of the house, put them out back. They put them out back, but they had three big tanks connected into one hose. One hose ran up into the house, into the window, and then they went to fireplaces throughout this house. This is a fire hazard. If you live in a city, you should have natural gas, same as anybody else, not propane tanks. Because if one goes, they're all, the whole block's gonna go.
I'll tell you, I have no idea what the regulations are. I don't know Kurt, is Steve?
Steve's there.
Would either one of you like to speak to this?
Sure, on propane, you are allowed to use propane. I'm sorry, but you are allowed to use, but you have, there's regulations on how it has to be applied throughout the residence. I did talk to their neighbors last year. I went to go to the house.
Yeah.
They had several hundred-pound cylinders throughout the house. I made them move them out to the proper distance away from the home. Actually, made them change the way it was plumbed inside the house to meet the current fire code. I know Kurt was up there this week, the house this week.
Well, they stopped doing this, right, too.
I talked to them, and they said currently, other than the cooking propane, which is in smaller canisters, which is unregulated because of the, the amount of propane, that they don't have the, the one hundred-pound cylinders in the house at this point.
But what if they, being winter, right around the corner, and they come back? All they did is set them outside below this window.
They put them outside where I told them to put them.
Yes, they put them outside.
Security cylinders.
They put, they put a raggedy shanty that fell over, and the propane tanks fell over also when the shanty went, the, the tanks went. Okay, these hoses are all connected into one, one hose. This hose is running through their bathroom window. I went down and looked.
Right now?
And he brought them outside, in through a window. And then where do they go after they're in the house? Because they have these fireplaces in all the rooms in the house. And it's a two-story, double-apartment house.
They were told to change from the, they had like a rubber hose stopping to a, a hard black pipe for hard line connections.
But they can have hoses all through the house?
No, well, they have to have, you can have pipes throughout the house. You can have like a gas line, a black pipe to a flexible line to your heating device.
They're hard piped in the house.
Right, now you can't use a, they had, they had rubber hose that they were, they were using.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was a fire hazard, and, and I've been trying to bring this, you know, to the attention and.
But they, but they currently do not, don't have the propane there. I can't act on.
They don't have it now, no, just for the, just for cooking.
We can't act on something that's not there right now.
Yeah, just for cooking, they have it right now. But when winter comes, just for cooking, they have a propane tank in their house connected to a propane cook.
They're small, one-pound cylinders.
Okay, so they don't have the big tanks outside right now?
No, soon as winter comes, then they'll be, you know, and then it's this issue again because if he smokes constantly, and I'm afraid that the house is gonna blow up, it's gonna take the whole block.
And I don't blame you for being.
And I've been, October will be eleven years I've been in my house, and they've been for it, and it, and it's a hazard. And I have pictures of this, this stuff that the code man overlooks on, on this house that is not proper for code. If you'd like to see some of the pictures.
Well.
Sounds like that you're, you're aware of the property.
For years, they should have had these things fixed, though. I mean, they have a deck, they have a deck on the back of their house that has three steps.
They moved out for a year, they just came back.
Oh, I see.
They just moved in this week. They just got one or this week. Okay, they're gonna fix the windows upstairs.
All right, so it has been looked into, and let me just.
All the propane issues were before.
Yes, I understand that.
Why she's bringing them up now, I don't know. It wasn't that.
Well, because it's part of a ongoing thing. Mrs. Hagler, let me say this. The propane tanks are not a problem right at the moment, so we can't go on the assumption they will be again. You'll have to wait and to see what happens. If they come back, and if you feel that they are not connected properly at that time, I'm assume she can call you again and it'll be rechecked? Okay, the other things, Mr. Green is saying that they have just moved in and that they have talked to them about some of these issues, and that, has it been empty a year?
They've been, they've been over there off and on, yeah, all through, since they, because they, they didn't full, they didn't fully move out. They bought a trailer at Rhodes Trailer Court. And then they stayed out there for, I think it was four months, and then now they're, they're moving back in. Over the winter, they were out there, and now they're back in here.
All right. Mr. Green is trying to look into some of the items that, that you have brought up here. And I would assume that you'll recheck to make sure that they take care of what has been cited for?
They haven't been cited.
Well, I know they haven't.
I'm working with them.
Or you've went and looked at it, and you will look at it.
The neighbor stopped in, we chatted the other morning, she was there.
Can, can I also bring up, ask how long it's gonna take for a fallen, the fallen-down deck that's on the side of the house and the door that's ate up that rodents are climbing in underneath their house? I mean, they got, I have pictures, huge holes under their house. How long is that gonna take?
And you've seen rodents going in?
Oh, yes, groundhogs are going in there. The neighbor said on the other side, groundhogs are going in on their side.
What happens with rodents?
He said, I have to deal with it. That's what he told me.
We don't have a rodent control thing, okay? I'm sorry to hear that, that you have to deal with that, but the other items, we will try and see if they get taken care of. As far as the deck, I don't know. Does the deck come under a, a safety hazard, or is it a blight condition?
It's a single-family dwelling right now. I, I can stop up and ask them progress. He's gotta repair the windows and get it in livable.
No, she's asking about the deck.
The deck.
Being unsafe.
I don't know, I, I'm not allowed in people's houses.
It's on the outside. It's the outside deck, off the kitchen window.
I mean, I don't want people's properties to look. If it's a rental, I can do something, but.
Okay, so that's their.
Do they own the property?
Yes, yes, yes.
Well, then we're talking a blight problem because people can have broken-down decks hanging off their house, I guess, if they want to, as long as they own the property, and we're limited to what we can do about it.
People bring these things to the attention of the Blighted Property Review Committee. We do have a Blighted Property Review Committee that meets.
Third, Wednesday, nine-thirty.
Just 3:00 AM every month. It's a committee of, you know, structured committee that is empowered to look into these things. And there's only two steps on that whole flight stairs.
And, I mean, it's all falling.
We have, we have the situation going on over town. It's something that we are trying to work hard on.
Nobody brings this forward, we don't know about it.
Why, I've been trying through, through the code office because that's where I was pulled to take the issues too, but, you know, it's not getting nowhere. So then I ended up with Steve Hines, and he hopped on something when I brought it to his attention, you know?
You and Rick are both members of that Blight Committee. Is there a procedure?
When is that?
Is there a procedure that people can, like by correspondence or?
Sure, they can come in person, or they could send us an application, email, phone, phone it in. We could discuss it from next meeting, bring it up to the board.
And one time, talking citywide here too, you know, other issues that are in town. People are concerned about the situation in their neighborhood. That was one of the purposes of the Blight Committee.
All right, so the Blight Committee needs on.
Third Wednesday, nine-thirty.
Third Wednesday, every.
Every Monday.
Nine-thirty in the morning?
Yes.
Yeah, right here.
Or if you can't make it, just.
I work, but, you know.
Rick's, Rick's a secretary on the board. Just call him and let us know what property it is.
Zoning tomorrow, okay?
And then we, the board will go around and make a trip.
I'll get the information for the board.